Ladies and gentlemen, thank you so much for coming out this evening to the Anderson High School Auditorium for swearing in our Anderson City Council. We will get going here in about five, four minutes. It's 5:24 now, so make some eagles with it. There is one main entrance in and one main entrance out. This door right here, so keep in mind if you go to the bathroom, if you need to go back to your car, or if you go out this door here to come back in. And we'll get going here in about five minutes. Thank you.
Did you tell them?
You do.
Ladies and gentlemen, good evening. Thank you for coming out to the Anderson High School Auditorium, home of the undefeated Bulldogs. As undefeated, maybe just one more round of applause, right? It doesn't happen all the time. My name is Jackson Hodges and I have the honor to serve as the City of Anderson's Public Relations Director. Tonight, we'll be going through a little bit of a ceremony. Welcoming everybody here that has come out. We're thrilled to see so many people here. This is a ceremony that is traditionally taking place early in the day on Tuesday or Monday, but we wanted to make sure this could be something everyone could be a part of because the way forward involves all of us together. So we needed to make sure that everyone had the opportunity to be here and to see what we're made of and to see where we're going. I'll come up here once in a while and introduce our next speaker. Right now, I'm going to introduce our new city manager, Mr. Kenneth Free, who will provide the welcome. Thank you.
Thank you, Jackson. First of all, I want to thank everybody for attending tonight. Like Jackson was saying, it's good to have this big of a crowd for this big of an event. First of all, getting in, ladies and gentlemen, distinguished guests, family members, and citizens of Anderson. It's my honor and privilege to welcome you to this important and historic occasion of the swearing-in ceremony for the mayor, the city council members, and a person in the city for the city of Anderson. Today marks not only the beginning of a new term in public service, but also a renewed commitment to the values, vision, and progress of our great city. We gather in this venue as one community, citizens, public servants, and leaders, joined by our shared belief in Anderson's future. The ceremony is a time to celebrate the trust that our citizens have placed in these officials and to honor the responsibilities that come with that trust, and to look forward to the continued growth and prosperity of the city of Anderson. As each member takes oath of office, they affirm their dedication to serve with integrity, transparency, and accountability, to make decisions that strengthen our neighborhoods, support our businesses, and enhance the quality of life for every resident of Anderson. On behalf of the city of Anderson's staff and our entire community, I extend our heartfelt congratulations to the mayor and council, being sworn in today. We thank your families for their support, and we thank you for your willingness to lead and serve. May this term bring unity, progress, and renewed purpose for the city of Anderson. Together, let us continue to ask ourselves the question, "Should I guide every public servant?" And this is something I have stressed as part of my interview process to be the new city manager. What am I going to do today to make Anderson better? So with that, I would like to thank each of you for being here and welcome to today's ceremony.
Thank you, sir. This next speaker is going to give a prayer. And I've always told my wife when I grew up, "I want to be like him." And it's a funny joke a little bit, but I tell you, this individual's probably helped more people than anyone would ever know he always says, but don't tell where it came from. Ladies and gentlemen, Dr. Mullen Peabody. We can pray with me. Heavenly Father, this is our home. These are our people. And those who are gathered today care about Anderson and each other. We ask, God, that you bless this time of ceremony. We ask you also, God, that you bless our leaders. And we're not only just praying for them right now, but every day, every time we think of them, because they are our future. They are our hope. And I know firsthand that they care about us. So bless us, Father. Watch over and care for us. Help us be what you designed and called us to be. When I pray for this city of Anderson, I pray, God, and thank you for those you put in a position of leadership. And I ask you, God, that in all of us, we will give your name and pray in honor for it, or pray in Jesus' name. Thank you, Dr. Mullen. We are now going to have one of my favorite students I've ever worked with on the council. Such a bright star. So many wonderful things come out of Anderson, but nothing is as wonderful as the people. Ladies and gentlemen, this Anderson native is now a sophomore at the University of Alabama, and she will be leading us in the National Anthem. Please give her a warm welcome, Miss April Smith. That was a great thing. A great one, though. We are now going to welcome the Jacksonville State University Gospel Choir here for an incredible performance. We will prepare the stage for them now.
I will, I shall, I must bless your holy name. For you are worthy to be praised. I will, I shall, I must bless your holy name. For you are worthy to be praised. All I own, my life to be. For what you've done to set me free. No one else will pay. Would you pay for me? All I own, my life. Is yours, Lord. I owe it all. Is yours, Lord. I owe it all to me. Is yours, Lord. I owe it all. Is yours, Lord. I owe it all to me. Is yours, Lord. I owe it all. Is yours, Lord. I owe it all to me. I owe it all. I owe it all. I owe it all. I owe it all to me. I owe it all.
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 I owe it all to me. I owe it all. I owe it all. I owe it all. I owe it all to me. I owe it all. I owe it all. I owe it all. I owe it all to me.
I owe it all. I owe it all. I owe it all. I owe it all to me.
I owe it all.
I owe it all.
I owe it all. I owe it all. I owe it all to me. I owe it all. I owe it all. I owe it all. I owe it all to me.
All I have, all I have.
All I have is yours, I owe it all to me.
Everything of my life, everything that I've been.
All I have is yours, I owe it all to me.
I owe it all. I owe it all.
All I have is yours, I owe it all to me.
Let's just do a few more times. That was truly wonderful. Thank you so much for coming all this way to share such a wonderful song with us. Who do you owe it all to? To be here through all of this city of Gotham. I just want everyone to know that we kept some receipts. And a new day is about to dawn. We're very excited for that. We're fortunate. We're so blessed that we're here today. I always tell people that every day of the grand school. You start with your thankfulness there and work your way up, and you're winning. That's the formula to it. So we are going to enter into the main part of our ceremony now. We're going to have the honorable Dustin Merritt, the Circuit Court Judge for the Seventh Judicial Circuit, to come up here and swear our council members in one by one. Then the mayor at the end. She will then give some remarks after the swearing-in ceremony. Thank you.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. It's been an honor to be here. I felled a grand revival after that. I could have to hear a few more songs. I'm glad I got that one great. Thank you, David. We're going to start with Ward One, Mr. Lewis Downey. Downey, come on. Just right after me, okay, sir? I state your name.
I, Lewis Downey.
Solidly swear.
I solidly swear.
That I am eligible for the office of city council member.
And I am eligible for the office of city council member.
And will execute the duties of same.
And will execute the duties of same.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
And that I will support the constitutions.
And I will support the constitutions.
And I will obey the laws of the United States.
And I will obey the laws of the United States.
And of the state of Alabama.
And of the state of Alabama.
And that I will, in all respects.
And I will, in all respects.
Observe the provisions.
Observe the provisions.
Of the ordinances of the city of Anderson.
Of the ordinances of the city of Anderson.
And will faithfully discharge the duties.
And will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the office of city council member.
Of the office of city council member.
Thank you, sir. Right, Ward Two, Ms. Erica Tolson. Tolson, you'll put your right hand in the bottle. Keep it after me.
I state your name. Erica Tolson.
Solidly swear.
Solidly swear.
That I am eligible for the office of city council member.
That I am eligible for the council, city of council members.
And will execute the duties.
And will execute the duties.
Of same, according to the best of my ability.
Of same, to the best of my ability.
And I will support the constitutions.
And I will support the constitutions.
And will obey the laws of the United States.
And will obey the laws of the United States.
And of the state of Alabama.
And of the state of Alabama.
That I will, in all respects.
And that I will, in all respect.
Observe the provisions.
Observe the provisions.
Provisions. Of the ordinances.
Of the ordinances.
Of the city of Anderson.
Of the city of Anderson.
And will faithfully discharge.
And will faithfully discharge.
The duties of the office of city council.
The duties of the office of city council.
Thank you, ma'am. Congratulations. City Council, Ward Three, Joe Marrieton.
I state your name.
Joe Marrieton.
Solidly swear.
Solidly swear.
That I am eligible for the office.
That I am eligible for the office.
Of city council member.
Of city council member.
And will execute the duties.
And will execute the duties.
Of same.
Of same.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
And I will support the constitutions.
And I will support the constitutions.
And will obey the laws of the United States.
And will obey the laws of the United States.
And of the state of Alabama.
And of the state of Alabama.
That I will, in all respects.
That I will, in all respect.
Observe the provisions.
Observe the provisions.
Of the ordinances of the city of Anderson.
Of the ordinances of the city of Anderson.
And will faithfully discharge the duties.
And will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the office of city council.
Of the office of city council.
Thank you, sir.
City Council member Julie Moss, serving in Ward Four.
I state your name.
I do not.
Swear that I am eligible.
Swear that I am eligible.
For the office of city council.
For the office of city council.
And will execute the duties.
And will execute the duties.
Of same, according to the best of my ability.
Of same, according to the best of my ability. Of same according to the best of my ability.
And I will support the constitutions.
And I will support the constitutions.
And will obey the laws of the United States.
And obey the laws of the United States.
And of the state of Alabama.
And of the state of Alabama.
That I will in all respects.
And that I will in all respects.
Observe the provisions.
Observe the provisions.
Of the ordinances of the City of Anniston.
Of the ordinances of the City of Anniston.
And will faithfully discharge the duties.
And will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the office of City Council.
The office of City Council.
Congratulations, thank you.
Now it is my ultimate push to act to swear in the mayor of Sierra Smith.
I state my name.
I, Sierra Smith.
Swear that I am eligible.
Swear that I am eligible.
For the office of Mayor of the City of Anniston.
For the office of Mayor of the City of Anniston.
And will execute the duties.
And will execute the duties.
Of same.
Of same.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
And that I will support the constitution.
And that I will support the constitution.
And will obey the laws of the United States.
And obey the laws of the United States.
And of the state of Alabama.
And of the state of Alabama.
And that I will in all respects.
And that I will in all respects.
Observe the provisions.
Observe the provisions.
Of the ordinances of the City of Anniston.
Of the ordinances of the City of Anniston.
And will faithfully discharge the duties.
And will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the office of Mayor of the City of Anniston.
Of the office of Mayor of the City of Anniston.
All right, congratulations.
Good evening.
Good evening.
To my fellow council members, city staff, our community partners, our speakers, Dr. Roland Brown, Reverend Solomon, Ava Smith, the JSU Gospel Choir, our city manager, and the citizens of Anniston, thank you. When I was campaigning, I was very careful with my messages. Because I knew that if I won, I'd be the first of many and I didn't want my demographics to overshadow my qualifications or merit. I knew that I had to be twice as good to prove myself to the people. But I would be remiss not to acknowledge the historical feat that has been accomplished here in Anniston and why this is so personal to me. My grandparents were called here to Anniston in the late 60s where my grandfather did service as the senior pastor of Mount Olive Baptist Church. However, he became so much more than that. A fierce leader, the first African American to be appointed to serve on the Alabama Board of Pardon and Parole, the Alabama State President for SDLC, and a true champion for civil rights all across the country. From being harassed, jailed, discriminated against, and even the attempted assassination in the very home that my family grew up, here in Anniston, to now his granddaughter being named the first African American and a winner. And if you are here today, I tell them that the sacrifices he made were not in vain. But I'm thankful today that I can share this moment with my grandmother who is here in the room with us. Grandma. Grandma, you have taught me well. And I hope that you are proud. I am who I am today because of the good Lord himself and the faith you instilled inside of me at such a young age. And to my family, friends, sororors, and my husband, thank you for always being in my corner. I need you all more than you know, especially now. Tonight is not just about swearing a new council. It's about recommitting ourselves to the work of service, to the people who make Anniston home, and to the future that is waiting for us if we have the courage to reach for it. Anniston has long been called the model city. And when that name was first given, it was because of our layout, our infrastructure, our planned streets, our early design as a city that others could learn from. But over time, I've come to believe that being the model city has to mean something deeper to every single one of us. I want us to be the model city not just for how we're built, but for how we build each other, for how we treat our neighbors, for how we care for our elders, invest in our youth and lift up those who feel unsafe, for how we show kindness even when we disagree, for how we serve with respect even when times are hard. The great civil rights leader Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. once said, "The time is always right to do what is right." And that's what I want this new chapter in Anniston to represent. Our collective decision to do what's right for our city, for one another, and for the generations that will come after us. Now, I won't stand here and pretend everything in Anniston has been perfect. I'm pretty sure everyone in this room could have a story. We know the truth. We've had the challenges with growth, with trust, with blight, and with division. We've seen the hardship lines, we've heard the criticisms, but challenges do not define a community. Character does. We are a city with deep and complicated history, but also one of extraordinary resilience. And every time Anniston has been tested, her people have always found a way to rise again, stronger, wiser, and organized every single time. So tonight, we acknowledge what has been difficult, but we refuse to be discouraged by it. Because we understand that acknowledging our weaknesses is the first step in strengthening it. Do the best you can until you know better, and then when you know better, do better. Anniston now knows better, and I believe that we are ready to do better. There is so much that we can be proud of. We've strengthened our infrastructure. We've expanded partnerships that bring jobs and investment. We've deepened our focus on workforce development, tourism, and revitalization, and there's still so much more work that has to be done. We've shown that this city can collaborate. City Hall, business owners, educators, nonprofits, and everyday citizens, all coming together to create opportunity and hope. And we've shown something else that matters just as much, that we can disagree without dividing. That leadership is not about power, it's about purpose. President John S. Kennedy said, "Leadership and learning are indispensable to each other." And that's what I hope defines this new season of leadership in Anniston. A willingness to listen, to learn, and to lead with humility. As we look forward, I'm going to challenge all of us in this room, elected officials, staff, and citizens alike, to think about the kind of model that we truly want to set. Let's be the model city in how we speak to one another. Let's be the model city in how we show up for one another. Let's be the model city in how we protect, educate, and empower our children. You never know, they might be the next mayor. Let's be the model city that proves small cities can lead with big hearts. Because model does not mean perfect, it means worth following. When visitors come to Anniston, I want them to fill our spirit, the sense that here we believe in each other, that here kindness is not a weakness, it's strength, that here everyone from Lynn Addy to Derrick South, from West Anniston to Golden Springs, matters and we all belong. As often enacted as Bryan Stevenson reminds us, each of us is more than the worst thing that we've ever known. And that's true for people, and it's also true for places. Anniston is more than her struggles. Anniston is a city of motion, learning, growing, and writing a new story every single day. We have heart work ahead, there's no question about that, but we also have everything that we need to get it done. We have the people, brilliant, talented, and committed. We have the resources, growing every year through strategic partnerships and smart planning, and most importantly, we have the heart. The kind of heart that shows up for neighbors in a storm, the kind of heart that volunteers without recognition, the kind of heart that believes progress is possible and is willing to work for it. So tonight, as we took our oath, let's remember that this ceremony isn't about titles or positions, it's about promises. And I know that's a taboo thing to say when you're a politician, but here's what we're promising. We're promising to lead with integrity, to make decisions rooted not in politics or partisan politics, but in principle, to lead not for attention but for accountability, and to serve not just for the city we see today, but for the city we dream of tomorrow. Please don't allow, I'm going to repeat, please do not allow what is happening nationally to distract you from the good that can be done locally. What lies behind us and what lies before us. What lies behind us and what lies before us are tiny matters compared to what lies within us. What lies within Anniston, within each of you, is what will shape the next chapter of this city's story. So let us walk forward together with respect, with empathy, with courage, and with faith. Let us show Alabama and the world that the model city is not just a name, it's a way of life. Because when we love this city and when we love one another enough to lead with kindness and to build with purpose, there is absolutely nothing that Anniston cannot overcome. And so I'll end with this. To all the young people that are here, or even the ones that are watching this online that will watch later, please hear these words. First Timothy 4:12 says, "Don't let anyone look down on you because you are young, but set an example for the believers in speech and conduct and love and faith and purity." There will be many people who will tell you, "You can't wait your turn, you're too young, you're too this, you're too that." But remember, God gave you the vision. Do it anyway. To Anniston. To close, to Anniston, on behalf of the newly-elected Anniston City Council, we are thankful, truly thankful for your trust and prepared to serve each and every one of you to the best of our abilities. God bless you and God bless the great city of Anniston. Thanks.
Ladies and gentlemen, I would like to present to you your new Anniston City Council. One more round of applause. Ladies and gentlemen, thank you so much for being here again this evening. We are now going to move into the closing portion of our ceremony. Again, it is an honor to have all these wonderful speakers, and it is an honor to have the pastor of Greater Thankful Baptist Church here, Reverend Jermaine Solomon.
Let us stand with our heads. God of our weary years, God of our silent tears, thou who hast brought us thus far on the way. Eternal wise and almighty God, who paused in this sacred moment to give you thanks tonight. Thank you for bringing us to this day where history meets hope, where the prayers of the past find fulfillment and the promise of the present. We thank you, God, for Mayor Sierra Smith, the first African American woman to lead this great city. Thank you, God, for her courage to step forward, her compassion to serve, her commitment to lead with integrity and vision. God strengthen her hands for the work ahead, stead of her heart when the challenge has come, surround her with wise counsel and supportive community. Cover her family with your grace and with your mercy. Tonight, we not only thank you for her, but we thank you, God, for this newly-installed city council. Grant them unity of spirit, clarity of purpose, and boldness to make decisions that uplift every citizen tonight. Let justice be their foundation, wisdom become their companion, service become their call. Always putting people before power. Lord, let this city be a reflection of your kingdom, where every person is valued, every neighborhood is lifted, every tree has room to grow. Bind us together beyond race, beyond politics, beyond division. Heal all wounds, restore trust, and renew hope within this city. And as we move from this moment tonight, may your spirit rest upon this community. Guide us, guard them, and grant them peace to serve with humility, courage, and love. Lord, as this next chapter unfolds, let this city be a place where every person is valued, where diversity is celebrated, where equity becomes our standard and shared pursuit. Lord, bless Anniston, Alabama, from its neighborhoods to its schools, from its streets to City Hall. May Anniston become a shining example of what faith, fairness, and forward vision can become. May it live up to the name of the model city, not just a title, but a truth tonight. And as we move from this historic moment, may the light of your presence guard our path, strengthen us for your purpose sustained for the future. Tonight, if we pray this prayer, in the mighty and master's name of your son, heaven's hero, earth emancipator, our Lord, redeemer, liberator, and savior Jesus the Christ. And now unto him, who's able, who's able to do exceedingly abundantly above all that we can ask of him, be glory, honor, and power tonight in this city, in this season, and forevermore. And all the people say amen.
Amen.
Amen. Amen.
All right, thank you, everyone, for coming to conclude our ceremony. And as the city manager, I look forward to witnessing the vision of our council members and making sure the city moves forward very outward. And so thank you, our City Council members.